I would like to call to order the March 16, 2020 regular meeting of the Tipp City Board of Education, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Whenever you're ready to call it over, Mr. Stevens.
Mrs. Dunaway.
Here.
Mrs. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Heatherly.
Here.
Mr. Simon, Mr. Patrick, sorry.
Absent.
Absent, thank you. And Mrs. Accord.
Here.
Thank you. We do have a form this evening, Madam President.
Wonderful. Okay, we'll start with the committee reports of the Miami Valley Career Technology Center. Was Russ supposed to be here?
No.
Okay, alright.
This is attached.
Okay, so... I'm sorry, I'm not really sure.
I think just be attached.
We're just gonna approve the minutes?
No.
Yeah, we don't approve these.
Okay. So just, thank you, thank you Russ for all you do for us. We really appreciate, his notes are so thorough that you don't even need to attend or watch. His notes, I feel like I'm there every single meeting, so he is such a wonderful asset to our district, and we just really appreciate him, so, again, thanks for all the hard work to Russ. So that leaves us to superintendent and assistant superintendent reports.
Alright, well, on the agenda, as you can see, we were hoping to have our government students here this evening, but with all that's going on across the nation, we know that they're safe at home and that they will be able to view our, this board meeting or other board meetings that are, have been recorded that are on our side. So, I know that Mr. Stentman, the government teacher's working and being very flexible about that, and so our students will be able to meet that requirement, but just not in person this evening. A second item, just is a coronavirus update. I know that as a board and as a district, we take this very seriously, and across our district, as of today, our students are not attending and will not be attending until we have further information from the governor. Right now, that is for three weeks, and so, we know that right now it's projected for April the 3rd, so that they would return on April the 6th, but we will all kind of stay tuned, because each day it seems that there's new pieces and items unfolding regarding this matter. A number of things have been put in place for our district, and I've been trying to reach out to our community and keep them informed via one call and also on our website. We've had a great cooperation and a lot of wonderful teamwork in the district, and that's been with our staff working together on all of our buildings, including our board staff here, with everyone working everything from technology to looking at the curriculum instruction and helping us get that organized, as well as providing support for the buildings when they are trying to scramble, when we find out on a late Wednesday afternoon that as of today, at the end of the day, that the schools will be closed, and then of course, we had chosen to even close them knowing that our students would be out and about on the weekend, and just thought that would be best practice. The things that I would like to talk about is that we have also put now in place for our administrative meetings and for our connections, it's called Google Hangout. It's a piece that we're able to build off of with our Google Suite that's in place, and that's gonna allow us to continue to work remotely and continue as administrative staff as things come up and other events that we have to plan for. We've been definitely providing messages on our machines and in, you know, our offices, indicating that we will be out, but our teaching staff and our administration are on a daily basis working remotely, so that they will be accessible and provide the support that's needed for continued learning. I do hope, and am planning to have superintendent's updates each Thursday, and so with that, there'll be just, some of those may be brief, others may be more involved as we have new information, but just getting that out to the community and certainly to our board members. And I think that other than that, you know, we do know that we will be monitoring our buildings to make sure that there's not any leaks or pipe breakage and all these kind of things. There's just so many layers when you have an unexpected closing and we're beginning with three weeks, and that we just will take it a step at a time. But I do feel like as a district and as a district team, we've handled it well, and each day we continue working toward it, and if there's pieces that we're missing or overlooking that we could use some assistance, support on this, or a question about an aspect, please let us know, because we will be checking voice messages as well as our emails, and we'll continue to work. What I will say is, whether it's lunch on us, it's a great program that we've been able to work with community services on, or any of the aspects in our buildings, we have a great community, and we come together just as our school district to make the best of our situation. Questions on that for now?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is just a celebration of the arts and academics. So before, we have had dismissal here for a closure for a while. We have had the opportunity to have our induction for National Honor Society. It was a very nice evening, and we had board representation there as well. Mrs. Dunaway and Mrs. Heatherly were there, attending. And we also have had the art show, the high school art show, and had a number of awards that were represented that evening, and had a wonderful evening with that, and of course, our musicals. We had Pirates, that was the LT Ball Musical, and then we also had Mamma Mia at the high school. So, great presentations, great, great example of the wonderful things going on with our students in the district, and very proud of them. And then I D is just our Fallon update for the survey. We are now ready to review our third draft of the survey, and we will be doing a Google Hangout with the administrative committee that is working with that, that occurs on Thursday, and then Friday we'll be making contact to provide that feedback to Mr. Fallon, so we keep moving forward and we're right on our timeline, so we feel very good about that. And we are up to the city of Tipp City, and that's Mr. Matt Spring. So if you'd like to step forward and share information with us, we'd like to hear that, yes?
President of the Board of Members, Dr. Kumpf, the school staff. My name's Matt Spring, I'm the Community Development Director for the city of Tipp City. Meyer plans to construct a new 300,000 square foot automated warehouse building in Tipp City. They'll be constructing this on the new 160 acre property located at 645 West Kerr Road. The project that they're proposing will retain an existing 225 jobs, and then it will also add 65 new jobs within the first five years. In the very first year of the project, once completed, the increase in payroll will be approximately $3,650,000. Meyer is requesting a 50% 15-year property tax exemption for this project. Since Meyer is requesting this 50% level, approval of the Board of Education is not specifically required. However, since the project does create an employee payroll of over $1 million, the city of Tipp City is required to provide revenue sharing of 50% of the income tax receipts for all the new employees for the 15-year incentive period, per Ohio Revised Code. The code also requires that Tipp City provide the Board of Education with a 45-day, business day notice of any revenue sharing agreement associated with an exempted industrial property. Accordingly, on January 31st of this year, the city did provide written notice to the schools regarding this proposed exemption, which would culminate after the 45 business days on April 6th. Meyer is pursuing an aggressive construction schedule, requiring them to break ground prior to April 6th. However, if Meyer would begin this construction prior to the April 6th period, it would jeopardize the proposed tax exemption. For that reason, the city requests that the school board of education would waive the 45-business-day requirement via resolution this evening. If approved, the Tipp City Council is also scheduled to act this evening on the request of Meyer property tax exemption at their 7:30 meeting tonight. I have a draft resolution that I've provided to Dr. Kumpf and Mrs. Dunaway, and I'd be glad to address any questions you might have.
When did you guys start, first start working on this deal or approach Meyer about this?
Meyer approached the city about that in 2018.
About this particular deal, the $102 million distribution warehouse facility, 65 business days?
It's evolved since 2018. Originally, they were looking at the property 160 acres back in 2018.
Okay. So, and you reduced the millage from 42 mills down to 21 mills?
So, nothing has been done at this point. So, the effective millage is 59.710029.
Hang on, can you say that again?
So I have some, some generic numbers that I could throw out. I can't guarantee how the property will be assessed. It's a, it's over a $120 million project, but let's assume a $50 million assessed value. So the county would take a 35% assessed rate of that $50 million, which would be 17.5 million. And the effective millage, again, 59.710029, would equal out to $1,44,925. The school millage, which is about 70% of the total millage of property tax, would equal out to $735,594 per year. So we minus off that 50% abatement, that leaves, leaves $367,797 per year that the schools would gain as a result of this project with zero students added. Additionally, as I mentioned in my staff report, there'll be income tax sharing for that 15-year period, which would equal out to about $27,375 per year, for a net gain of this, to the schools of $395,172 per year.
How are you doing your income tax calculations off of the five-year, like full implementation model?
No, off of year one, the 3.3 million, $650,000 figure.
And that, that's after you add 65 jobs when this whole thing is complete?
It's just that, it would only be for 56 jobs after the first year. It would increase after that, but I wouldn't give you the lowest number that it would be. And again, based on an assessment that I can guarantee that the county will make, but we feel it's a close approximation.
So did you look at this, the resolution that you sent us?
Yes.
Okay, so, first of all, it needs a correction, because it says March 20th at the Tipp City High School, which obviously last week you knew we were meeting at the Board of Education.
Sure.
So that needs fixed. If you go to the last page, I have a real issue with that 1, 2, 3, that fourth whereas. Whereas on January 31st, 2020, the city provided a written notice to the Tipp City, da-da-da-da, "Tipp City Exempted Village School District Board of Education BOE Regarding This Proposed Abatement." Well, I actually take upset, uh, take exception with that, because I don't really feel like that's accurate verbiage, because you gave me a confidential handwritten letter that was delivered, I don't know to who, because it was hand-delivered, but not to me, and it says, "Mrs. Teresa Dunaway, Board President." It doesn't say Board of Education. You state here, "Board of Education, January 31st." So that would imply that the entire Board of Education knew, which they did not, because myself, Dr. Kumpf, Mr. Stevens, we were not allowed to discuss it at all. That was made extremely clear to us. So I have a real problem with that language.
Understood.
It makes me seem like I'm not being honest with my board. This board is trying to be completely transparent, we're trying to be a new board, and I don't like that, I don't appreciate that, and that, to me, is just not okay.
Understood. And let me just state categorically, that there was no intent whatsoever to hide any type of information from this board.
Well, you tell the boards that we're all on the same page when, myself, Dr. Kumpf, Dave Stevens, when we were allowed, per you and Mr. Eggleston, when we were allowed to discuss this, because that's a pretty big difference from January 31st.
Correct. So technically, on March the 9th, the Controlling Board of the State of Ohio reviewed the case in a public forum, so anytime after that point.
I would agree with that. We were told not to speak about it until after March 9th, so we took that, obviously, as March 10th.
Understood.
So we've had really no time, we've had, what, six days, to actually have this as a board, this information?
Understood.
And I just feel like that's not a very good way to do business. If you've known about this since 2018, we're supposed to be partnering with the city, and to me, you don't keep your partners in the dark.
Sure.
And you're asking us for a favor. You know, if I were, when I was back in business, if I was gonna go in and ask somebody for a favor, I would always say, "If A, then B," right? Hey, I would have customers come to me all the time. Can you waive this $20,000 install fee for my T1 line or what have you? And then, as a company, MCI would ask for something on the backend. So to me, if we are truly business partners and we're working together, plus you're only giving us a six-day notice, I would come to the board and say, "Hey, what about we give you that land at the stadium?" Right? Because if this is a big deal for you guys and you want Meyer in here, it's a big deal for us to own the land that we're putting a $4 million asset on for the city. I'm just saying, right?
Sure.
Can I follow up?
You can say whatever you want, I'm rambling, go for it.
I really echo Mrs. Dunaway's thoughts, and in addition to that, I'd like to offer my thoughts. She's the president, and I...
But I am not, we're all aboard, so...
Well, correct, but she, you know, so, the thing that, this just kind of popped out of the blue last week, and I really didn't, didn't leave me with a very warm and fuzzy feeling, Matt, I'll be honest with you. First thing that I noticed, this memo from Tipp City is dated February 13.
Yeah, I forgot to open that up.
February 13. This is a month later that I'm receiving something that was generated to the Tipp City Schools Board of Education a month ago, and now I'm just seeing it.
Right, understood.
And so, I don't understand, you know, that just, there, in addition to that, there is nothing stamped on here about confidentiality.
Correct, agreed.
Thirdly, I want to state that, yes, we, we can discuss individually, but no one individual has the power to act alone. We must act as a board.
Understood.
And I don't, based on what Mrs. Dunaway said, I feel that that was a very, because we didn't know about this, so how can we go to our board with something we don't know about? You put her in a very compromising position by putting this under an umbrella of confidentiality, which to be honest with you, I don't even understand how that umbrella can exist, because again, a board, no member can act individually, and this is addressed to the Board of Education, not to the Board of Education President, but to the board.
Agreed.
But we got nothing on this. I cannot speak for Mrs. Dunaway, I'm not going to speak for Mrs. Dunaway, but I'm just seeing that this is disturbing, quite honestly.
It's disturbing to me too.
That you have governance over there that seems to be doing something with one hand, and then coming over here, it's generated some concerns, because now we have a resolution in front of us as a board, and there's falsehoods in this resolution. For example, the fourth whereas that Mrs. Dunaway just referenced, it says, and I'll give you a chance, it's on that back page, did you find that back? Okay, the fourth one down, whereas, "On January 31st, the city provided written notice to the Tipp City Exempted Village School District Board of Education Regarding This Proposed Abatement." No, I did not receive a notice on, I, I knew nothing about this until last week.
Right, I understood.
Then the last part of the resolution, section one, and I'm right here.
I'm right there, yeah.
"The BOE waives the 45-business-day notification requirement as noted in Ohio Revised Code 3735.67A1, acknowledging that the city provided notice on January 31st." So now we're entangling an ORC code requirement of a 45-business-day notification, which obviously, I didn't get, I can't speak for the rest.
Correct, and it was dated January 31st, but that doesn't mean that was the day that it was hand-delivered to me.
So this is putting us in a very compromising position, well, it's not gonna be a compromise for me, because I, I'm not going to attest to falsehoods. I'm not gonna sign a resolution that I know contains inaccurate, incorrect information. And then in my final thought, nobody has been able to provide me, and I'd really like to know this if it's out there, nobody has been able to provide me a reference in the Revised Code that says one board member can act individually, including being unfairly requested for confidentiality, because we are a board, and if it's that confidential and privileged, we could be told that as a board, and I think we're responsible enough as a board to hold that confidentiality.
Sure.
So that's what I have to say about it, Matt.
So I'll finish up, because obviously I'm, have plenty to say. So I had a phone call with yourself and Mr. Eggleston, because you requested an executive session,
Yes.
which it does not fall under executive session, the executive session parameters, because it's a real estate deal, yes, but it's not the school purchasing a piece of real estate. So it didn't fall under those parameters, and I believe I got back to you on that. We discussed why it wasn't executive session, I reached out to the attorney, it didn't fall under our executive session, what we're legally allowed to discuss.
Okay.
But this is what upset me, what I said to Dr. Kumpf, Dave Stevens, and Corinne, because I wasn't allowed to discuss anything in the actual confidential letter, but I, I did, we all discussed that there was something coming up, we knew that it would be on the March board meeting, because we could not discuss it until March 10th. The four of us discussed it on March 11th at our agenda meeting, and that is when we read your February 13th letter, the four of us. But this is what I said to this small group. I said, "It's not our real estate purchase, it's theirs," so that's why it did not fit the executive session parameters. And here, here were my thoughts. Why are they contacting us at the 11th hour? You gave us no time, March 10th until today. If they have something to say, it can be done publicly. If it has to be an executive session, and then not happening. And then I said, "Corinne and I are completely transparent, this is unacceptable."
Um, time out, Corinne and I. Are, are these types of, um, is it a deal, is it a...
CRA agreement?
A CRA agreement. Are they considered executive session material for the city council?
Yes.
So you guys could have met in city council and invited us to attend your executive session?
I suppose so.
You can invite anybody into executive session, as long as you announce it before getting into executive session. That would have been, that's a great idea, I love that.
Well, I was just thinking of how, because, I mean, I love Tipp. I wanna see us grow, I wanna see us take advantage of every opportunity that we can as a city, but I, I'm also kinda like, ew, this, this isn't right. Like I didn't receive notification on January 31st. You know, like I, I do have, like a honesty clause in my gut going, that's not really what happened.
Sure.
Can you, can you give me any information that would make that?
I'll try to.
Okay.
I mean, it's obvious that I've upset people here by some of the actions that I've taken.
Oh, and it's not, it's not you personally, we're just trying to...
Let me say, first of all, that I apologize for any type of...
This isn't personal, this is strictly business, do not take it personal.
Just, but, I, I'm the one that created this document,
Okay.
and so, I tried my best to create it in an accurate way, and I certainly, I've never done this before, so another part of it is just sheer...
Hey, I've never been a board president before here, so I will give you all the grace possible.
That being said, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna try to at least address the main point that I see. There are a couple of what I would call small errors, like for example, the fact that the meeting isn't taking place at the high school tonight, that could be fixed fairly simply. And we could simply delete the section that talks about, section, that's, section one of the actual, now therefore, is just the parts that says, "Acknowledging that the board received notice." The, the simple, I'm gonna call it simple, but the only act that I'm asking for the board's action on tonight would be a waiver of that time. So whether I gave it to you this morning, 45 business days ago, or six days ago, you'd be waiving every minute of that time down to zero. So if, if the, if the resolution was approved, it would, thankfully, it would waive all the discontent you have about not being informed about it. And the only thing that truly that you're being informed about is that the Tipp City Income Tax Department will be sending you a check for approximately $27,500 each year. The board has no power or authority to be able to act on the actual incentive, so the fact that you didn't know about that 45 days ago is, obviously, if you wanted to know about it in 45, and have a full 45 days to know about it, there's certainly an issue there. In this particular case, it's just simply the realization that the only request before you is, are you willing to hear that this is a successful project that the schools will be gaining significant funding on, and simply waive the time, knowing that we could correct the rest of the errors in this resolution, because it's, it's certainly something that can be fixed.
I, I completely agree with you on all of that, and you are correct. We, the city decided to reduce the millage from 42 mills to 21 mills, or whatever your 59 number was, so you cut that in half for us, we have no say on that. You're asking us, the only thing we are allowed to have a say on is Meyer wants to start construction immediately.
Sooner rather than later.
Right, and, and I understand that.
Yep.
So to me, like I said, going back to my very first example, I mean, if you're trying, you know, to sweeten the pot, we'll take that land at the stadium, and this could look really different the next time we meet. I feel like that's fair. If you took, if you reduced the millage and we had no say on that, let's talk about that stadium land. That has been lingering for three years. Let's have a discussion about that, all of us. Let's get that out in the open, rip that Band-Aid off and deal with it.
Sure, and of course, that's out of that purview to be able to do any kind of...
Well, Matt, if I may say, speaking about your purview, I'm concerned. I mean, I think I, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the nutshell of this is that as a board, we have the function of waiving, if we choose, the 45-day...
Business day, yes.
Business, yes, perfect.
Yep, okay.
And that would be the desired outcome for Meyer, so they can begin construction earlier.
Okay.
However, what I, what I'm not sure about is, on section one, waives the 45-business-day notification requirement acknowledging that the city provided notice on January 31st. So now I feel like we're getting entangled in...
Well, I stated earlier, not to interrupt you, but that would be something we could just simply delete.
So that would be, I mean, I'll be, go ahead, sorry.
It's moot anyway if you waive it. It's moot, because...
Well, that, that may be, the 45-day notice requirement may be moot because we waive it. However, I'm not so sure that you can just waive what the Ohio Revised Code requires.
You can.
You can.
This board can waive that requirement specifically.
No, we're talking apples and oranges. The ORC, it seems to me, is saying that you must provide that notification requirement. Now, that doesn't mean you're gonna wait 45 days, but you have to provide the notice of this is part of the ORC, and then at that point, it's up to the, to the governing body to decide whether or not they're going to waive it or not. I'm, I'm not so sure...
I'm certain that the ORC allows this board to waive any and all of those 45 days.
No, that's not my point. My point is, I'm, we're not arguing about whether or not we have the power to waive 45 days. The, the discussion to me is whether we say from the beginning, "We're waiving this," or "We're not waiving this," that doesn't nullify the ORC requirement to provide that notification.
Sure, and the notification was provided, but let's just say it was provided on March 10th?
Well, I think that...
Well, on here, it states on January 31st.
I think he's willing to correct the...
Yeah, I think that...
Resolution, is what he's saying.
Right, this whole resolution needs to be done, like you said, the high school thing needs to be, you know, those little kind of small details, which, I mean, semantics, I get that. But maybe you should take this back to your legal counsel, because the whole thing is, obviously, needs to be redone anyway. And then you can ask your legal counsel, Mrs. Accor's question about the ORC code, just to verify if that's correct or not.
Sure.
And let's just start there. We need a whole new resolution, this is not gonna work.
I mean, with those changes, I'd be glad, I'd be glad to make those. We have our legal counsel available, and I could, I'm almost, I believe it's actually in the ORC that talks about the waiver clause. So if we change the date to January 10th rather than, or I'm sorry, March 10th versus January 31st, change the high school requirement, and then...
Well, we would have to have another meeting, because we can't legally discuss how we're gonna vote, and, do you know what I mean, we'll have to have now a special meeting to vote on this, because we can't approve a contract with all these errors.
So, but...
Because later in the agenda, we're voting on this resolution, later tonight on our agenda.
It has to be this resolution.
Yeah, and let's cut to the chase.
Correct.
You're going to go into city council tonight, right?
Their meeting is tonight, right, isn't city council meeting tonight, okay.
So you're waiting, this is a domino, you're waiting for our approval,
Correct.
then you're gonna take it to city council and wrap it up.
Correct.
Okay. I'm sorry, Matt, I mean, this is not my intent whatsoever. I, I do think that the take-home message here is that documents mean something. I, I do think that the take home message here is that documents mean something.
Absolutely.
And when they're addressed to the Board of Education, it should go to the Board of Education. I very much respect our president. And I resent the fact that she was put into this position and I feel that it was a bit underhanded because there was no reference as to what allowed someone to come and, and ask for her secrecy from the rest of this board. We had a lot going on in January and February, searching for a new superintendence. This is not something we handle on a regular basis. It's not about a thing with Meyer. I'm all for economic development. But I do believe that as two governing bodies over there in the government building and here in the board building, there needs to be a lot of mutual respect.
Sure.
Yeah, I did, I definitely did not feel respected by the other half at all.
Um, I apologize for that.
It's okay. I'm just saying, for future reference, we need to.
No attempt whatsoever, none, to in any way act in an underhanded manner. As a matter of fact, it was, if I was doing something that would jeopardize this, I would have fixed it.
Yeah.
To me.
But Matt, the, the, the appearance is there. Because for one thing, when this is addressed on January, excuse me, February 13th to the TIP City Schools Board of Education, how did that even get sent out?
Because it wasn't emailed to the entire board. That was the other strange thing.
How, where did that go? Where, where did this go to?
It was emailed to me, but it was not, but it was addressed to the entire Board of Education.
Yes.
So for future reference, if you're going to, like in this confidential letter that was hand delivered, but not to me, it says, Ms. Teresa Dunaway, Board President, that's fine. But if you're going to send an email addressed to the Board of Education, then email it to the entire Board of Education or put in there, please forward, because of the confidential thing that I received.
Understood.
You know what I'm saying?
I did.
And, you know, we, we, we're going to be on the board for years to come. You're going to hopefully be at the city building for, you know, a lot more years. We want to have a great working relationship with you. All of this can be cleared up. But it was important for us to be honest and let you know how we feel because we want to avoid these kinds of situations moving forward.
Understood.
So that's it.
Maybe we, maybe they could throw us a bone with the stadium.
Hey, I already asked for that.
I mean.
Heck, yeah, go for it.
So if I understand, what you're asking us is, we do have the power to waive the 45 days. But in an agreement between city and Meyer, you all have agreed to waive the abatement. And so you have reduced the amount of payroll tax that we would share with you. Am I understanding that correctly? Over the course of the 15-year period?
It's about half a million dollars a year.
So about, the, the city is considering enacting a new reinvestment area agreement with Meyer to incentivize their construction of a $120 million facility. And what that would do is it would reduce their property taxes by about 50% per year for the 15-year period.
But then you're going to split those payroll taxes with the Board of, with the school district, aren't you?
So then, the city collects income tax on employees.
Yes.
And since their new employee payroll is over $1 million, the city is required to do some type of a revenue sharing agreement with.
And do we get 1.5%? Is that the right amount?
You get half of the 1.5%.
Half of the, okay, the 1.5% is what we split with you.
Yes.
But the millage has been reduced 50%, so we're getting half of.
We're getting half of what the half is going to be is my point. And did I understand that city council will be in executive session tonight about this?
They will not be in executive session. It was a regular agenda item which will have to be removed from the agenda.
Okay, alright.
They discussed it on March 9th as a group, and that's why we can't talk about it until March 10th.
So I guess my question ultimately then leads to is, we don't know what the city was going to maybe give in return for our 45-day wave of the.
It was going to be nothing. I think, I think it was nothing.
So it might be premature for our president to say, give us the stadium. They may have already been thinking that.
Well, that would be, well, wouldn't that be great?
Wouldn't that be something?
Yeah. It's not premature. We've been, we've had to fight for three years.
Something that may have been other things like increased police patrol and not charging it to the district or.
That's an interesting.
There's probably other things that the city could probably help land.
What does, why does the city want that? I mean, if you're, you're giving up your tax money, you're splitting half of it with us, what is the, what's the big, just to develop the land?
$120 million building and I guess 56 jobs in five years.
Is that, is that what it is?
So, um, Meyer has an existing campus where the Meyer Distribution Center is currently. So they have a building, it's essentially what they call their 805 building. It runs, um, east-west along Kessler-Colesville Road. They'll essentially be, I don't want to say abandoning that building, but that's their existing drive grocery storage area now. The new building that there's constructing, that theoretically want to construct would, that, that function would move to the new building, which would leave the existing building on Kessler-Colesville Road empty and theoretically available for further production. No specific plans, but sometime later in the future, it's a, you know, a large building on, on the Meyer site. Then additionally, the city would work with other partners to construct the balance of Abbott Parkway from its existing terminus to the Meyer property. And the proposed facility doesn't take up anywhere near all of the 160 acres that they purchased. So it would also incentivize additional construction and hopefully other buildings there in the future. Again, not, nothing, no plans, just kind of a theoretical. So those three things are really what's motivating me.
Okay. I can't speak for the other board members, but I don't want to do anything that jeopardizes this. I think it's been recognized what the missteps were. But I'm, I'm hoping that the city is looking at how they can work with the school board to help us waive this 45 days.
So it'll expire naturally on, on April 6th.
Right.
With no requirement within the school.
Right. So you're basically just getting like a two and a half week head start, roughly.
Essentially.
Yeah, but construction moves pretty quickly. I mean, you can get, you know, you can get a lot done in two and a half weeks. Especially with the nice weather. The weather's been really nice, so.
So if the resolution were changed and you would need us to then reconvene, is that what you're needing us to do?
Well.
As soon as.
I, I guess I'm, I'm very ignorant of the process. I didn't know what would happen next.
I mean, if this wasn't signed or agreed to tonight, you didn't know what.
Well, it won't be because it's not written, right?
Right.
And so if, even if.
You'll have to draft the new resolution and send it to the entire board. And then we will have to vote on it. Now, our next regularly, regularly scheduled meeting isn't for another month. So we could have.
It doesn't matter. It's going to expire by then.
Right, we could have a special meeting or, you know, this week or something like that. We have the ability to do that.
Alright, thank you. Appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
We do have a work session on March 31st. I mean, if you just want it signed.
But that's kind of too late because they're looking to start now, so.
But I'm just saying, if, if you want this to be a partnership, we want this to be a partnership. If there's any way that the TIP City, City of TIP City can partner with us, I don't know. I've, I've heard the land been thrown out there a couple of times so that at, at the end, it's us partnering, which I think everybody in this room wants to do, is partner together.
Sure, I, I understand. I can't speak for.
Even if it's just like a, you know, a, what is that called? Like, an olive branch thing? I don't know. You know, just, just to, just to get us on the same page.
Understood.
Send an email to the entire board after you meet with your people and, you know, we'll see where we can go from there. We're more than happy to meet this week and, you know, we know how much you value your relationship with Meyer, as do we. And we just want to move forward and, you know, get all these kind of little issues taken care of.
Thank you very much.
Do good business.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I, yeah, social studies curriculum.
So, um, the K-12 social studies maps have been sent to the board. You received the K-5 curriculum maps last week in the Friday board update. And then you received, actually, it was probably a week and a half ago that you received those K-5 curriculum maps. And then the 612 were sent out, I believe, with the agenda this past Thursday. Our plan moving forward is to continue moving forward with curriculum and bring a supplemental and instructional materials presentation to the board at the April 27th board meeting. So that we would have the full curriculum review completed for social studies at that time.
And I'll just say that the, the curriculum committee's been doing a great job. Mr. Veerhoff has really helped them pace themselves toward this. Uh, often we will have our staff come and help with presentations, but in light of our current situation, uh, I believe that it will be Mr. Veerhoff that will be spearheading that and showcasing all that information for us.
Keep it easy.
Very good. I just didn't want you to be aware. That's the direction we were headed on that. Alright, item G, uh, that's about our workstation rotation. And what I wanted to bring forward and see if we might discuss briefly was the aspect that we really have the first station that is on this upcoming station on March 31st. I would like for you to consider moving it to the board office here.
Yeah.
Instead of having it out in the buildings.
You can tag that up to that other one.
Yes, we're having our, our buildings, um.
Cleaned.
Cleaned, yes. And we are really limiting traffic.
I really liked the schedule that you put together though. This was really great. And I think that this is going to do a lot to get people in our buildings and seeing why, why we have the urgent need that we do, so thank you.
Yeah, do you see they start with a 30-minute tour?
Yes, I love that.
At 5:30, 30 minutes before 5:30, we'll be doing the tour of the building that we're in for that meeting.
It's going to make it real.
Yeah, I think it will. And hopefully we could get that underway. But for March then, uh, I would say that we wouldn't be doing a Board of Education tour, but.
Right. It would take about a minute.
I mean, it would take a minute.
It would take 30 minutes.
You're not looking in my room.
And this is where I work.
You can walk through here in a minute.
But we will, we'll hold the station.
It's like New Year's party. If everyone sees house in all of these, you guys might get a bigger building, you never know.
Alright, so we'll make that adjustment. We'll get that out to you.
I like that.
So we're going to stop on that date, Dr. Combs, just March, just the March 31st.
I think that we'll, we'll provide what's, what's here because we have proof that our buildings as far as their availability and not having a book fair, you know, in the hallways and all these kind of things. So we've, we've got that underway, but we're just trying to take it one at a time if that's alright. Just kind of wait and see how everything unfolds.
I think, I think life is a day at a time right now.
Yes.
I mean, honestly.
Yeah, so, alright, thank you for that.
Yep. Okay, citizen comments. Do, and did you grab the paper?
I apologize, there was no paper.
Oh, it's okay. Did, did you want to give citizen comments? No?
Does anybody here want to speak?
We forgot our sign-in sheet. Going once, gone. Okay, no citizen comments.
I do.
That takes us to the, was today the Hickory River thing? I felt like it was.
16 to be.
I thought, oh, okay, we, we had to answer. Well, okay, well, that takes, yeah, that takes us to the TCEA comments, which take me to Hickory Rivers.
So. Our Hickory River fundraiser will be rescheduled.
Awesome.
I, we could have had drive-through. I heard their drive-through is still open, so.
Right.
Um, do you, is it okay if I just stand here?
Yeah, whatever.
Okay, alright, I just want to take a second to thank our amazing teachers and support staff, our administrators, Dr. Combs, and Mr. Veerhoff, along with Steve Sagona, or Steve, Jim Sagona, um, for just the amazing work they did along with the board to support the children of our community. It's been amazing. TIP Monroe Community Services and Gary Fister serving them lunch. Our staff trying to make sure that we educate them in this crazy time. But we just all came together as a team and I just, it, it makes me feel wonderful to be an educator in this district when those kind of things happen. And I just want to take a second and let the community know that. And to let parents also know that if there's anything that you need, the staff is here for you. You just have to email their teachers and ask questions, you know, give your concerns. We're here to do whatever we need to do to make this right for the children. And they're the most important thing, that, they're the most important part of our lives, so, you know. I just wanted to give that little bit of thank you to everybody and thank you for your support. Appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Combs.
So president comments, I mean, not to be a broken record, but I'm just going to piggyback on everything you said. So I will additionally thank just a few people that sometimes are what I call the unsung heroes, which the janitors who are deep cleaning all of our buildings, every building secretary who filled all kinds of, you know, once in a lifetime, hopefully, you know, calls that, you know, in a pandemic, how does that even, what does that even look like? Uh, to the bus drivers, all of these kids, if anybody, I know that I pick my kids up every day and the kids walked out with, I don't even know how many pounds of books and folders and basically their entire lockers. So that takes a lot of patience for a bus driver and other students getting on and off the bus. And everybody in the board office who has been working around the clock. And just to reiterate what you said, everybody coming together for the students. It was really just a wonderful thing to see, so that was, that was my comment. Do you have anything to add, Ms. Dahl?
Oh, no.
Okay, it's president, vice president comments.
You guys, you guys, I think you guys kept it. Thank you so much. And thank you again for coming and sharing your comments. We really appreciate it.
Very welcome. I enjoy coming.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, well, that takes us to the, um, approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approved prior minutes, uh, February 24th, February 25th, March 2nd, March 3rd, and March 10th.
Second.
Thank you for reading that, Joan. I always forget to read it.
I would add, as amended.
Oh, as amended.
If you've got a chance to look at these, thank you to the board members. Uh, that was Ann that seconded that.
As amended with the corrections provided by Mr. Stevens.
Correct, on our separate handout.
Yes, thank you for everyone that read through and, and provided these corrections that we have. I'm just glad that they, you know, again, it's just one small sheet.
You do a great job. I mean, any budgets versus buckets, I mean, you know, those little things are going to happen. It's still a word.
It's amazing, I didn't read through this and you're writing, just accept it.
It is words. You did not, it's, it's easy to do and we, and we talk so fast and you're over there typing a mile a minute, so we appreciate it. Job well done.
You need that machine, Dave.
I need that machine.
Like a dictaphone?
I need something. If we're going to have this detailed, we should have something. I, I mentioned how I.
You do a great job.
I mentioned the notes to other treasures and they say I'm crazy, so.
Yeah, you're very, I mean, Russ Gilmore is still up here, but you're closing in on him. You're closing in on Russ.
Any, any other comments on these minutes this, tonight?
No, I thought they were great.
Thank you.
And thanks for the amendment, Chi. I like how we do this now. Or if this is so, this is so, yeah. We're making all kinds of awesome changes this year. I mean, my goodness, we're just knocking it down one at a time.
The minutes are very thorough.
Yeah, I like it.
I mean, wow.
Okay, any further discussion? Ready for a vote?
Heather Lee?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all you treasures report.
Alright. Getting here to the content. Another month gone, another month in the books.
Crazy month.
Uh, before we discuss it, can we get a motion for approval of the February 2020 financial report?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Dunaway and Dahl.
Okay. You know, I feel like a broken record sometimes as we go through this. Oh, my goodness, my pages are out of order.
Oh, my.
If anybody didn't notice, but the cover's on page seven, so I apologize for that. I'll put it back together. That's no big deal.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, all the content is the same. Well, when you're doing this at home over the weekend.
When you're working 17 hours on the coronavirus, things can get shovelled.
So this was probably, what? 12, 3 o'clock in the mornings, Saturday morning? Okay, anyway, um, the one big issue to note on here, uh, just, you could see that we had no property tax. Our property taxes for February were the highest this year than they were in the prior two years. Again, this is related to, um, advances.
What page would be on there?
Uh, this would be page two. I apologize. Uh, page two, those are due to just the timing of advances. We will receive final payouts for the, um, first half of our tax settlement in March. And we will see more tax revenue this year than we have seen the prior two years, but it's not too different from previous years. Uh, the other thing to note would be that interest revenue, if you haven't been following, um, it is going down. It, it, over the weekend, the Federal Reserve rate, uh, lowered the interest rate to pretty much zero.
Yes.
So we're back to the same rates that we were years ago when we were getting nothing. The good news is that we were able to capitalize on the higher rates while we could. Uh, and so we'll just have to wait and see what happens with the coronavirus going through and the situation. I'd like, I'd like to see them go back up sooner rather than later. However, it also helps us though with these interest rates down like this, if it does come back slowly, this helps with our bond issue. We're able to pass it. We'll save lots of money for the citizens.
We probably don't have anything we need to refinance.
Oh, no.
It wouldn't even help us.
I'm not. You know, that's not a bad idea. I will check with Mr. Burns and see if there's anything that we can refinance. But we've saved a lot of good money, uh, by refinancing in previous years. We did a refinance in 15 and a refinance in 16, so, um, it's been five years, so.
High school's only for, 2024, so we only have four more years on that.
That's correct.
So, but
We could refinance that down.
Yeah, they'll save some more.
Yeah, I mean, four years, yeah, four years.
Can you give us an update to that?
Yeah, sure.
Maybe in the Friday board update, if you can reach Mr. Burns.
Yeah, don't worry, if you don't have time by Friday, focus on the pandemic.
How much this'll be worth, it's, uh, it's worth it.
Hey, this'll be some good news in a time of stress and anxiety, right? We'll have to do a one call for that, Dr. Comf, with that good news.
Uh, everything else, all of the variances that we see are easily explained, and when you look at the graph sheet, it lists all the differences. Um, again, tip is, is, uh, very consistent, like clockwork, it's, it's just great to see, um, this coronavirus, who knows what this'll do for everything else?
Right.
But we might see some, uh, interesting variances here for the month of March and April, even, could be May, could be, who knows? Other than that, I have nothing else to report, any questions from the board on this?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you ever have any questions, so free, call my office, which will be my home for a while.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm gonna forward my phone, I'm gonna forward my phone to the cell phone, so.
There you go.
Give me the phone. Anything else?
No, we're good.
Alright.
Ready for a vote?
Dunaway?
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item, go ahead, do I do it or do you?
You can do it.
Okay, cause Dr. Comf does it around, so I'm, like, just tell me what you want, okay, item E, uh, the fiscal year twenty appropriation amendments, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
That would be Joellen and Kirin. Any discussion?
Only two, only two funds are being asked for, uh, increase appropriations, one is for the general fund, this relates to the high school, they're looking to, uh, appropriate funding to help purchase items for the shop using the Joseph Barnhart donate, uh, estate donations.
Yeah, we talked about that last month.
In February, uh, they are doing a lot of upgrades and safety upgrades to the shop.
That's awesome.
And then, the other item just goes back to, uh, our athletics, uh, Mr. Kramer has increased, the biggest increase was, uh, for his athletic donation account, he's looking to, uh, purchase some video equipment for the high school, I believe, had to put into the gym. Uh, I don't know, I, he's waiting to provide me the, the quote on that. Those are the only two increases we have, it's really easy to balance at the end of the month.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns? Alright.
Alright, ready for the vote?
Um, Heatherly?
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Great, item C, uh, ORC five seven zero five dot four one, purchase order certification, then and now, fiscal year twenty. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second. Motion and second, Dahl and Dunaway.
Alright, the dreaded then and now, we have one, um, however,
It's a small one.
It is a small one, it's just barely over the three thousand dollar limit, and I will note that it's one of those CYAs, uh, because it was a, it's an auto renewal invoice.
Ooh.
Cause our services, the services actually don't start until April first, so, but the invoice that they automatically generate and send to us, it's had a date on there, so that's what we gotta go off of.
Perfect.
What kind of service is it? I don't understand what that means.
The, the library renewal, um,
It's our school library.
Uh, I believe this is for all of the libraries, Stephen may have to help me out.
Every building has one, I mean, every, right, yeah, yes, just access to their file catalogs and all that general, well, yeah, that kind of stuff. Oh, no, I mean, yeah, you're, I know they do a lot of that online, my days, you had to pull out the bin yourselves and it was
It's just, it's fall at school.
Yeah, fall, fall, so I think that is the checkout system.
Oh, the checkout system.
There's the holding system on the books, so that kinda goes hand in hand, yeah.
Alright, perfect.
Yep.
That's right, turn that.
Thanks.
Is that a lot, to check out books? I thought it was for like
It's for the software.
It's the software.
Okay, gotcha, so that's just like an old gate.
Like cat walking, and then they have
So it's like six hundred a building per year, if you
It's a code on the back says
It'll be nice when we have less buildings, see, this is another thing that's gonna get reduced when we get that one.
But you may not have those books, I don't know.
That's true, you might not have, that's true.
Is that, is that fee generated based on the number of buildings, or how, how does that, is there
I have to pull up the invoice and look through it, but I believe it does have five buildings listed on that invoice.
Absolutely, it does.
So.
Good to know.
You know, the good, I mean, you know, honestly, with the scan software system, I can easily pull this check number up and see the scan right now.
I know, fallout also provides books themselves, I think, is that, yes, so that's the other piece, not having it in front of me, I know they do, they work with both aspects, so, it could be either one.
Interesting, okay.
Alright.
We're good to go, ready for a vote?
So.
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies.
Motion carries, I haven't been saying that all night, okay, I feel like it's been forever since we've had a board meeting. Item D, approval of the rates of tax for twenty twenty.
I'll move.
I'll second. Dahl and Dunaway.
This is one that we only see once a year, the county auditor's office has certified the annual tax rates to collect the amounts, uh, necessary that have been approved in previous years. Uh, due to the increase in the tax valuation of Tip City with their recent revaluation, they have to reassess the, the, uh, effective millage rates, uh, so, Theresa earlier when Mr. Springs was talking, the fifty-nine mills that he was talking about, I believe is the entire millage for the city of Tip City and every other taxing entity that receives money from the taxes, that includes the library as well,
Okay.
and the CTC, um, so, uh, this is something we do once a year, I looked at the rates, everything appears appropriate, um, I did catch an error a few years ago, but, uh, so that document is one that all the board members would need to sign, uh, although Mr. Patrick isn't here, so we still have a quorum, uh, a quorum approving it, so we'll have four signatures on that document.
Don't rush out tonight.
Don't rush out tonight, I've missed that before.
We do, we do that sometimes. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Dave, ready for a vote?
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item nine, old business, supplemental staff amendment. Approval to amend the following supplemental, oh, as per the agenda, there you go, let's just do that, we always forget, as per the agenda.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Dahl and Heatherly. Any discussion?
Oh.
Okay. Yeah, and this is just a follow-up from our last meeting regarding the double error, so, yeah, we're glad to get that, all taken care of, yep.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns with that?
No, what was the outcome on that, I know there was a discussion, so the payment will go out to this child.
Yeah, uh, uh, when we contacted the coach, uh, she indicated that when she provided her budget to the treasurer's office back in May of twenty nineteen, she had included money in ball, in that account that stated for, uh, coaching supplementals. And then, there was just a miscommunication between her and the treasurer board office when it came to putting those onto the agenda for approval back in, uh, in May, for that as well, so.
So now we're stating it the correct way, and it was never our intent not to pay her, we just wanted to have it stated the correct way.
Consistent.
Yeah, exactly, so.
And, and she, and we know, uh, for future years, if they're planning on doing that, then we need to get it on there, so.
Right, and she understands that it was just a clerical type cleanup that we were doing, okay.
Molly was, she was, she was very good at, uh, clarifying things and providing, uh, some emails with saying, hey, I remember doing that on the budget, and then, if the board recalls, I did send out a document to them indicating everything that had occurred for that.
Yeah, thank you for that. Okay, good to go, any further discussion? Okay, ready for a vote, Dave?
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, new business, item A, resignations.
Item A, recommend approval to accept the following resignations as per the agenda.
I'll move.
I'll second. Dahl, Dunaway. Any discussion? Seeing that there's none, ready for a vote?
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes. Motion carries.
Item B, recommend approval to hire Mark Stefani as superintendent of Tip City Schools effective August first, twenty twenty. Mr. Stefani will be on a three-year contract from August first, twenty twenty, to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, with a salary of one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars per year.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
So that was Dunaway, Dahl?
Dunaway is a core.
The core, thank you.
It was a tie actually, but yeah.
Probably goes to the one, run.
There you go. Any discussion?
Um, we're just sad he couldn't be here, of course, with everything going on, um, it's just a, one of those times.
Right.
And I would add that I, I welcome him and I look forward to the transition process with him.
Yeah, I think everybody seems happy, I think he's gonna be wonderful, and it kinda has to be weird for you to be sitting here, it's kind of a, you know, it's, I know, you know,
Bittersweet.
Bittersweet moment for you.
That's exactly right.
And, but it has to make you feel good that there's, you know, a very capable person coming in and, um, I know that you're gonna be awesome working with him and transitioning and we're all excited, so, yeah, good stuff. Any, any further discussion, do you wanna know, okay, alright, ready for a vote?
Dunaway?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes. Motion carries. Guess it's official now.
It is, it is.
Uh, his, uh, signature page of his contract is in the documents here tonight, it's you and I, we'll sign that and order onto him.
Correct. Yes, and Right, and we're working on the bridge contract, so it did need to be signed by tonight, he has it, he's looking at it, and so we're, we're covered. Thank you. Oh, motion carries, did I say that? I can't remember.
Alright, item C, recommend approval to hire Michelle Bell as the payroll manager, step nine, effective March thirty-first, twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Heatherly, Dunaway. Any discussion?
Welcome back.
I was gonna say, welcome back, that's what I was gonna say.
She's in the, she's in the back corner of the room, I apologize.
Oh, hi, nice to meet you, I thought you were here for citizen comments, I, that's why I asked. Take it all in. Well, there, you should have a baby tab.
You wanna say that to introduce yourself?
Don't you have like an old tip shirt that you could've worn from earlier?
But, um, hi, my name is Michelle Bell, and, um, I'm very happy to be back home, and, um, I just
So why?
Thank you for welcoming me, and, um, I will do my best to carry on and get everybody paid in the time of year, because I know that's very important, so.
And they will appreciate you for that.
People love to get paid, it's a crazy thing.
They say you're gonna be a hero.
That's right, you have a fun job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you and welcome, nice meeting you.
Yeah, I'll just add that I'm, uh, very happy to be welcoming Michelle back into the founding department, I know that a lot of the ladies around the building are very excited to
That has to make you feel good.
Thank you.
And she's well learned about, she revolted very quickly.
That's absolutely correct. Okay, any further discussion? Ready for a vote, Dave?
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can leave if you'd like now, Michelle, I'm sorry.
I, my husband would appreciate that, so thank you very much.
Forgot to introduce him, but nice meeting you.
This is my husband, EJ.
Nice to meet you, EJ.
EJ, I apologize.
Thank you very much.
Oh, have a great evening.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Item D, recommend approval of the following substitute staff for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, pending proper certification and paperwork as per the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Dunaway, Dahl. Any discussion? Ready for a vote?
Dunaway?
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item E, recommend approval of the attached running list of substitutes, holding an active license with the Ohio Department of Education, as per the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Dunaway, Heatherly. Is there any discussion?
Uh, this is just a, a new procedure that they're asking us to do that on a monthly basis now.
Wow, that's interesting, that's a lot of stuff to put in there.
The school's list is asking us to do this?
Everybody.
Uh, Neola.
Oh, okay.
Everyone, oh, okay. Good to know. Any further discussion? We're ready, Dave.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item F, recommend approval of the following supplemental positions for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, pending proper certification and paperwork as per the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion and second, Heatherly, Dunaway. Is there any discussion? Alright, ready for a vote, Dave?
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item G, recommend approval to contract services for the following two companies for additional student educational and support services, including the services of an aid, an educational passport school program, and transportation suburban school transportation company incorporated.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Dunaway, Dahl. Any discussion?
Is this the increase that we spoke about, the, this has nothing to do with the ESC, this is in addition to new stu, new student that new student in the district?
Just doing headbooks into the district.
Just providing support services.
Just weeks ago, okay.
Can, can I just ask, is there, ESC Northeast Ohio, why so far away?
Because that, they're residing that, in that location, but the parent is residing here, and that, that provides them the support they need there.
Any further discussion? Ready for a vote, Dave? Oh, take your time, we're going super fast tonight, I know it's
Alright, I'm keeping up.
Yeah, I don't know, we wanna get you guys out of here, it's gonna
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes. Motion carries.
Item H, recommend approval to continue to accept open enrollment students from adjacent Ohio school districts Item H, recommend approval to continue to accept open enrollment students from adjacent Ohio school districts for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year as per our current policy fifty one thirteen.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Dunaway, Heatherly. Is there any discussion?
I I can I ask for clarity on a vote situation? If I vote to um not approve this, would that put in jeopardy our staff getting the money from those districts for our staff children that come here?
You would just uh put the district receiving the money?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's how many people that are non-contingent? Was it fourteen, twelve?
Oh, not me, how many s- oh, that are non?
Yeah, because it's.
This does not affect the non-contingent.
Right, it's only the non-contingent, right?
Non-contiguous.
No, if if this is voted no, then we will have no open enrollment?
Yeah, which means we get no.
Which would mean the fifty that are currently contiguous who would get no funding.
Right.
So that would cost us how much per student?
Uh it's six thousand twenty per student, but the total that we've been receiving is five hundred thousand dollars and then we have is it four hundred and then we have two hundred and something thousand going out.
Um you have to end.
Right.
Gotcha completely. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Any further discussion? Anyone? No, okay, ready for a vote. Take your time.
I like typing the word video. Get from video. Okay. Uh Dunaway?
No.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
The core.
Abstain.
The vote failed.
Okay. I don't, oh, sorry, took it wrong.
Alright. So that just that was a two, one abstain. I would just recap.
Yeah, it's hard with only four people, it's kind of pop, it's kind of weird. Okay.
Item I, recommend adoption of the social stage curriculum, maps, and standards for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year.
I'll move.
I'll second. Dahl and Dunaway. Any discussion? Seeing that there's none, ready for a vote?
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Core.
Yes. Motion carries.
Item J, recommend approval of contract with Lean Six Sigma to attain the yellow belt, green belt, and train the trainer certification for TIP City Schools as per the agenda.
I'll make the motion. To approve.
Any second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second, Heatherly and the core. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say a few things. I I I think the concept that I love the idea of the industry credentialing and you know, I I think that's a good um proactive step to pursue. We went from thirty thousand now down to twenty thousand, which is a good thing, because we asked questions and we stayed in the loop and um I think what threw me off here, this kind of at the end right here is this coronavirus thing, not knowing where we're going, when we'll be able to because I don't wanna start rumors, but now I'm hearing things about we may not go back at all this school year. I mean, and so then there's the timeline and the training and the and then we have a new superintendent coming in. I I guess I just feel like maybe taking a breath on this, so that I.
Um if I could, I'll speak to that just a little bit.
Sure.
I I do think that credentialing is is very strong and very good. I think the program is very strong. I think that uh we are fortunate uh that they have shown an interest in TIP schools and and you know have stepped forward. Uh we're also fortunate that it is out of Van Delya, so it's a a close uh connectivity for us. Um what I will say is that I thought a little bit about that timing as well with the spring training, but what I do think is that uh one, there'll be a couple of things. I think that we're not going to be unique in that. Uh and if you saw on the uh to this evening's uh agreement, that we are connected with TIP school that are also going to be able to be offered that. So I think that combining that, that there will be really troubleshooting and problem solving about how will that be approached and what will that look like? The nice piece about approving it is in a sense that we lock in then that dollar value, and this is a very good value for this. And because we are connecting with another district is part of the reason that that price has gone down. So I would think whatever we're working through, TIP will be working through with succeeding and if it ends up being a a delay of you know a summer training or something else that we'll all be in that together. I know that you know with a new leader coming on, we want them to feel involved and part of the decision-making process, but I do think that someone that's a forward thinker will really see the value in this and the opportunity that we have queued up and in place for our students. Uh and then I know Mr. Verhof had this additional handout this evening. If there's anything you wanted to highlight on that, Mr. Verhof?
What what is the training gonna look like? I know last time through Anne's questions, we kind of found out it's gonna be like a condensed training to get our teachers certified. That that was a real disappointment for me because part of the value that I see in this is the culture, climate changer, stretching it out and having teachers work through problems and come and collaborate together like in staff and and everything. Is it gonna be the same training like kind of condensed in the summer?
It actually probably would not get underway till the fall.
Okay.
With the training. Um and in talking with maximum potential, the three eight-hour sessions for the yellow and green belt training and then the three eight-hour sessions for the train to trainer is not a condensed version for them. That's actually their preferred model.
Okay. So is that gonna so is that gonna happen like um they're gonna like come out of the classroom the day then?
We would have to do professional day, yeah.
And you foresee that probably not happening until the the fall of twenty twenty, is that what you're?
I would anticipate that, yes. Um otherwise, we're looking at some additional costs in summertime to compensate teachers and and things along those lines.
So I'm just trying, I I see the three eight hours, so that's a total of twenty-four hours for the green.
Mm-hmm.
And then another twenty-four hours. So I mean, I guess I'm trying, I'm really having a hard hard time visualizing this based like we started in middle of August, September. Where does that come, you know, how does that?
Like a weekend or you're talking about like a specific day?
Yeah, I just I'm just not seeing, you know, I'm I'm stuck.
Well, it's hard to project out specific days at this point because we're still gonna be working through that. But what we talked about with Mr. Hummel was probably a day in August, maybe before students start, if we're able to work that out with TIPWA and with what our teachers need to do prior to the start of the school year. Um then probably a day in September, October, November, December. Um we may have to double up in a month at at that point. Um but that he felt very confident that we could get this accomplished and be able to somewhat pilot this in some uh in two of our elective classes in semester two.
Semester two.
And then as I noted there at the bottom, what we would be looking at doing for the twenty one, twenty-two school year with creating a new elective course, it would be a full-year course called Workplace Leadership. And students would earn a twelve-point credential through that with Lean Six Sigma Yellow Belt, Lean Six Sigma Green Belt, and then Leadership Excellence.
And did you ever decide how many staff are gonna do this?
So we have two staff members um that would receive the Train the Trainer training.
Okay.
So it's now either five or six?
Yeah, because it was, okay.
Yeah, there would be seven to ten participants for just the Yellow Belt, Green Belt training, but then as far as the Train the Trainer, um that would be two staff members for sure at the high school, um and perhaps some administrators as well.
Mr. Verhof, oh, sorry. Please forgive, I I can't turn it off, that's just how my brain works. So if this opportunity was missed or delayed or turned down at this point, realistically, when if you, you know, when could you jump back in and recapture that opportunity? What would you see like the earliest being able to do that?
I would say probably not until the fall, we're waiting for new superintendent and and things like that.
The fall of this twenty twenty.
So then that pushes things even further out as far as developing that course, developing that into the program of studies scheduling. It would definitely hamster.
Is there a chance we might not be able to be involved at all if other schools sign up?
There's a potential, but that's a good point.
Right, and because it is getting more popular, because everybody's looking for credentialing, uh and then the other piece is the aspect of being able to team with another area local that helps us with pricing.
And then um the Train the Trainers, are they also in the regular training too? So is this like, okay, so.
It'd be six for those those two staff members, six days of training.
And did I, I didn't get an answer, it's been crazy. So on my email, um when I first came on the board, we only had two students that were doing an alternate pathway or a capstone type thing. So just to kind of figure out exactly how many students would be using this, how many did we have this year, an alternate pathway or a capstone project?
So I would say that this, while industry credentials are are something we're definitely looking for for our at-risk students with graduation.
Correct.
Um I would say that we probably have approximately twenty students that would be looking at something like this. I see this also as something that would capture some of our college prep students as well. Um I don't think we need to look at limiting this to a certain population of our students, but looking to encompass our entire population of students um who are gonna be pursuing four-year degrees and going out into the workforce. Uh this is Lean Six Sigma, as as you know, is an industry-recognized credential. It is something that the University of Dayton and other universities across the country are inserting into their business and engineering programs. So this gives our students uh an added advantage in going into those programs, could help them with internship opportunities and things of that nature um as college students.
Yeah, I love the program. I just, it's just the timing isn't right for me with, you know, because this is a top-down program, I just I just don't feel like it's right putting this on the new superintendent. I feel like they should have some say in it. So love the program, just for me, not the right timing.
So Mr. Verhof, also, two two staff members getting trained on this. Now, and again, it's because that's just two people, so what if you like that individual's contract and they
Yeah, we we have two identified, but there's.
Decide to go somewhere else, then how do you fill that void or and is there an additional?
We would think advantage of that up to five. We would train other people. It's identifying who those other individuals would be. Um and I don't see that as an issue. We do have individuals who are interested in that.
Okay, I think there's some potential with partnering with TIPWA as well, and able to share those resources. And I would say having a new superintendent coming in with Ohio having so many changes to their pathways to graduation, having more options seems like a good thing at this point, yes. Um and and I would hate for us to move this uh lose this opportunity and I I agree with what you said, a new superintendent coming in would be fully thinking and think that this is probably uh a smart move for us to act on.
Actually, it makes our our district attractive to someone. I mean, I know he's committed to us, but I think it it's another thing that makes our district attractive. It's moving forward with an awesome opportunity and a program that truly is would benefit those that are definitely pursuing college and those that are pursuing the workplace right now.
And even though we have a new superintendent coming in, because I mean, we really know they love this program.
Oh, I never, I've never.
I I love this program, right? I think that we need to set him up for success and our students up for success, and I think that that definitely, and and he is from out of state. Um and it the the pathways, the seals are changing, it's a it's a you know, a moving target. We have to make sure that our students don't lose out in the transition.
Gotcha. Any further discussion? Okay, ready for a vote, Dave?
Heatherly?
Yes.
The core?
Abstain.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Abstain.
Motion fails.
Would there be any consideration to putting this on the agenda next month?
We've had it on the agenda three times. I guess I one thing we could do is reach out to Mr. Stefanic. I mean, we haven't done that. I don't know if it's appropriate because he hasn't started working here yet, but that would be a consideration. Because nobody knows how he feels about it or what his thoughts are.
We, I I though I like.
Your ideas are.
Joel's thought, because hopefully in a month, we're gonna have a better vision of what we're doing with our schools open for the rest of the year or not and I will say in to that comment, in general terms, there's probably lots of systems that the school doesn't know how to address given the coronavirus. So there's probably gonna be lots of issues that need to be addressed and this would just be one of those details. I was trying to say that when you were mentioning not knowing, there's certain, there's so much uncertainty with everything, so we don't know how the school year is gonna end up.
Well, my feelings are still gonna be the same. Um I I don't think it's right to have this program, which is leadership-based, when we have a new leader coming in. I feel like I feel like they should have he, we have a name now, I feel like Mr. Stefanic deserves. I feel like it's disrespectful to say, oh, hey, and by the way, I love that you bought this brand-new house and we've already picked out the wall paint and the granite countertops and the carpet and you can't change anything. Oh, great, that's not what I envisioned when I bought this house. I mean, it's a kind of a big thing to throw on him and because he's already been hired. If he were six months away from getting hired or three months away, I just feel like it's disrespectful. That's just my personal feeling.
I think it's disrespectful for the amount of time that's been invested in researching this, when this board asked for that. And so if we're not.
I didn't ask for research. My thoughts have been the same for three months. I haven't never changed.
I believe Trent brought this to the board and we invested time with our leadership, our present leadership, to look into this, and we've had a lot of questions for them.
Three months, yeah.
And the price has been reduced. We have a partnering school within our district. Um to me, the questions have been answered, uh and I would hate for us to
I I think that um what we should do, if we can, is add it to the next board agenda because obviously, I love it, but I don't think we can continue to talk about it, it's already been voted on, so.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, we've already voted on it, so it's done.
Let's add it if we can and move on.
So we need to move on to the next agenda. I I agree with that, we're done. We've already discussed it, the motion failed, and it's it's been on the board agenda three months in a row now, so. Dr. Kung, we're done.
So item K, um I need some guidance on how you want to handle this, uh if you're wanting to vote it, if you want to remove it from the agenda.
Well, we have to, we have to vote, it's on the agenda, yeah.
We don't have to vote, just on just on second or first.
Oh, we need to, yeah, that's true.
A motion to remove it from the agenda?
That's true.
The president just says remove it.
If it doesn't get a motion in the second, then we don't have to do anything.
It just says vote failed for motion.
Does anybody wanna make a motion?
Do I make, would you recommend?
I agree.
Yeah, go ahead, start, yeah.
Recommend approval of resolution to waive the forty-five days, the forty-five business day notification requirement for the Meyer Distribution Center revenue sharing between the city of TIP City and TIP City Schools.
Okay, can I can I get a motion? No motion, so item fails. Okay, that takes us to citizen comments and nobody else has entered the room and we didn't have any earlier, so there are no citizen comments tonight.
Madam President?
Oh, sorry.
May I just ask a clarification?
Yes.
And uh this may be the wrong point to ask this, but regarding item K.
Uh-huh.
Uh is there an inclination that this will be revisited at a different meeting or?
I don't feel like I got any clarification from Matt when he left, and so the way we left it during his presentation was that he was gonna take it over to city council tonight and I instructed him to email all of us and then we'll kind of go from there with what he says, because we have no idea what they're gonna say, think, or do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So to piggyback on that, should we placeholder a date this week in case they do return and ask for us?
I think we just cross that bridge when we come to it, because there might not be anything to discuss.
Okay.
Okay, so citizen comments, we have no citizen comments. That takes us to item twelve. First read of the new revised deleted policies and guidelines as per the agenda. I'll make the motion.
I'll raise the motion.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Everybody was so quiet, I'm like.
Yeah, make a comment. Uh I just want to comment that uh there was the additional piece that had been added that uh is addressing coronavirus.
Oh, yeah.
And that was something that was uh just very recent and and timely.
You good, Remi? Okay. Upcoming meetings, are we, do we know if these are, are we still having these or is it kind of day by day? Are they all canceled?
Right, the tri-agency meeting has now been canceled.
I thought it was canceled, okay.
Uh our work session right now appears to be on.
Still gonna have it, right, okay.
That has now been moved to the board office.
Right, the board office. And the additional work session on Tuesday, April twenty-first, at the typical new middle school library, we'll still continue with that, just knowing that things are fluid right now. And then the next regular Board of Education meeting, which we will still have, will be on Monday, April twenty-seventh, at the Board of Education office, so I don't anticipate that changing, so. Okay. Now we have a motion to adjourn to executive session for purposes authorized under Board of Education Policy zero one six six.
Um make the motion?
I'll second. Motion and second by Dahl and Heatherly. And I am gonna add something to that, I'll read it again.
We're going to amend the
Yeah.
motion.
I would like to amend the motion to add um section G four. Preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. So I'd like to add that in addition to the original item, which was to adjourn to executive session for purposes authorized under Board of Education Policy zero one six six and O R C one two one dot two two, section G one, to consider the discipline against a public employee.
And can you read the other?
Sure. Section G four. Preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations
Okay, preparing for, conducting.
Or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Oh, ugly, ugly, ugly.
And the board does not anticipate any action?
Madam President, would you like me to join you this evening?
Yeah, and I was gonna vote and then, yeah, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, so it was motion and seconded by, I believe, Heatherly and Dahl?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
Do we need a new motion since you amended the motion?
No, I just amended it and added section G four.
So you don't need a new motion?
So we just need to vote, yeah.
Okay.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
The core.
Yes.
And the board would like to invite Dr. Kung into executive session with no anticipation of any action. So with that, we'll adjourn to executive.